Is absent tonight, Mayor Pro Tem Burgel.
Here.
Councilmember Costellano.
Here.
Councilmember Arroyo.
Here.
Councilmember Allison and Councilmember Mezner are absent tonight.
Thank you. And if all would join me, who would choose to in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, come to the Republic, with which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so we have no closed session this evening. Our first proclamation for the evening under mayor's announcement is March for Meals proclamation, which will be read by Councilmember Arroyo.
Great. Do we have someone here to receive it? Great. So in recognition of March 2020, the 18th Annual March for Meals Month. Whereas on March 22nd, 1972, President Richard Nixon signed into law a measure that amended the Older Americans Act of 1965 and established a national nutrition program for seniors 60 years and older. And whereas the Humboldt Senior Resource Center observes the National March for Meals campaign to raise awareness about the escalating problem of senior hunger and isolation in our communities. And whereas through the Older Americans Act nutrition programs, the Humboldt Senior Resource Center has served the Eureka community admirably for over 40 years. The center provides nutritious meals to seniors which help to maintain their health and independence and avoid unnecessary hospitalizations and/or premature institutionalization. And whereas the Humboldt Senior Resource Center's congregate and home-delivered meal programs provide a powerful socialization opportunity for hundreds of seniors to help combat loneliness and isolation. Now therefore, I Natalie Arroyo, on behalf of the Eureka City Council, do hereby proclaim March 2020 as March for Meals Month. The council urges all residents to honor the foundations, service organizations, businesses, and individuals who support our senior nutrition programs as well as the seniors they serve.
I didn't have your mic on. Would you be willing to? You're welcome.
Resource Center, I'm the Director of Nutrition and Activities at HSRC. So I really appreciate this opportunity to come tonight. Just to share a little information, I've got some news about our programs I wanted to share with you. But just to remind everyone that the Humboldt Senior Resource Center operates three dining centers. One up in Arcata at the Community Center, our main one right here in Eureka at the old Washington School Building on California Street, and down in Fortuna. And as I explained in Fortuna yesterday and the Board of Supervisors today, we just moved our Fortuna Dining Center over to the Jean Lucas Community Center, and that's going to be a great relationship for us. And we also provide home-delivered meals that many in the community refer to as Meals on Wheels. And we deliver those in McKinleyville, Arcata, Eureka, and Fortuna. So in the handout that we've provided for you, and I even brought one for the city manager because this is my first opportunity to meet the city manager, it does provide some statistics, some stories about the program that I think will help you as you understand the program. In our last fiscal year, we provided over 63,000 meals in that program. And in the Eureka area alone, 34,000 of those meals were provided in the dining rooms and in the home-delivered meals. In our dining rooms, you could walk through the dining room today and ask people why they were there. And many of them will definitely say they're there for the meal, but many of them, just as many will say, they're there because they want to share that meal with someone. They want to meet with friends. They want to break bread with friends over a meal. It's so much better than sitting at home by yourself, maybe opening a can of soup or having a bowl of cereal. So that socialization is just as important. And the same thing for the home-delivered meals. You may wonder, where can we say that we provide socialization? But that driver is a connection with the community. So Kim, you've been out on a route. You know that some of those folks on the route, they don't see people on a regular basis. So that connection with that driver, and that driver performs an informal safety check. So that there's a protocol that we go through if something is wrong, if we can't reach them, or if we find them and they're in need of help. So it's a really important service that we provide in the community. But here's the good news. First, I'll remind you that a few years ago, because of finances, we had to cut back some of our programs. We reduced our dining centers from five meals to four meals. And for our home-delivered meals, we delivered only four days a week rather than five. But we've been really working and we're looking for sustaining help in the community, and that's coming forward now. And I'm pleased to say that just last October, we started serving meals in the Eureka Dining Center. Last Thursday, last October, we started serving meals on Mondays again. Arcata, we just started this month. And this month, we also started delivering home-delivered meals on Mondays. So that's really good news for us. The reason we come for March for Meals is just to raise this awareness. These programs are very important, but we need so much the community's support to continue those meals. In the packet, not only did I provide information on our specific programs, but I also provided a Meals on Wheels National Handout that talks about the escalating problem of senior hunger and isolation. And I hope that you'll have some time to review that. Also in there is an invitation. Many of you have been to our dining center, ridden along on our routes. I invite city manager over to meet us. We'd love to show you around our building, get you out on a route, introduce you to the Humboldt Senior Resource Center. So again, thank you so much for this opportunity to share information about the program.
Thanks for being here, Barbara.
Thank you.
Okay, our second proclamation is for California Arbor Day, and that'll be read by Councilmember Costellano.
Great. And if Keep Eureka Beautiful would like to come up to receive the proclamation. California Arbor Week Declaration. Whereas this measure proclaims the week of March 7th through March 14th as California Arbor Week, and urges Eureka City residents to observe the week by planting trees in their yards and in their sidewalks. And whereas Arbor Day is celebrated nationally as well as in California, where it starts on the birthday of Luther Burbank, famed California horticulturist who produced hundreds of plants and trees that have contributed to the natural splendor and food production in our state. And whereas California Arbor Week has the involvement of Keep Eureka Beautiful, which has planted over 1,000 street and front yard trees to improve the quality of life in Eureka. And whereas trees help maintain or increase property values and attract businesses and new residents. And whereas trees slow traffic, encouraging residents, young and old, to bicycle and walk. And whereas trees can reduce the amount of energy consumed in heating and cooling buildings. And whereas trees help reduce greenhouse gas emissions by sequestering carbon. And whereas trees reduce air pollution. And whereas trees protect and purify our coast and bay by reducing surface runoff. And whereas trees provide essential habitat for birds and other wildlife. Now therefore, I Leslie Costellano, on behalf of the Eureka City Council, do hereby proclaim March 7th through March 14th as California Arbor Week, and urge all citizens to observe and celebrate the week by planting trees for our own benefit and for the benefit of future generations.
Good evening. Okay, I am on. My name's Tara Friedman, and this is Wendell Shouts, and we are members of the All Volunteer Citizen Group, Keep Eureka Beautiful, dedicated to making Eureka a city of tree-lined streets. We've been planting trees for 14 years and have planted over 1,100 trees. We work with homeowners in the city's residential areas to plant trees either in the sidewalks or front yards next to the sidewalks. We also work with businesses to plant trees in front of their stores. While there's no charge for trees or other planting materials, property owners are asked to pay $75 of the $100 city charge for cutting a sidewalk hole, with Keep Eureka Beautiful picking up the remaining $25. Volunteers from the California Conservation Corps, Kiwanis of Henderson Center, and the Eureka Rescue Mission do the planting, along with Keep Eureka Beautiful volunteers. For a number of years, Keep Eureka Beautiful has received a small annual grant to support this work. Given that we buy trees at a deep discount from Pearson's, and that we have no office expenses, and that we have no paid staff, this allows us to plant up to 100 street trees a year.
Hi, I'm Wendell Shouts, 41-year resident of Eureka. And continuing on, some merchants are reluctant to have street trees because of concerns that they will obscure signage and facade. But studies have shown that shoppers say they are willing to travel further and stay longer when visiting retail areas that have trees, as well as to visit more often. Moreover, shoppers rated landscape business districts as being higher in visual quality and comfort, providing more positive interaction with merchants, having higher-quality products, and generally appearing to be better-maintained. Street trees draw visitors and residents alike to commercial areas. And the new cultural arts district's street tree master plan proposes to increase the number of street trees in Eureka's newly-designated cultural arts district, along with adding beauty. Trees improve the environment, help clean our air and water, increase property values, slow traffic, reduce energy usage, reduce crime, and create a more livable city. Thank you.
Thank you. So moving on, next we will have our public comment period. This is the time for members of the public who wish to be heard on matters that do not appear on the agenda. City Council policy is to limit each speaker to three minutes. Those members of the public who have completed a speaker card will be called in the order the cards were received. The public will be allowed to speak concurrently with the calling of an agenda item following the staff presentation of that item. And pursuant to the Brown Act, the city council may not take action on any item that does not appear on the agenda. Is there any person, or Pam, do you have the cards?
Our first two speakers will be Cornelius Lohnstein, followed by Harry Wilcox.
Dear citizens of Eureka City Council, coming to city council for years and trying, begging, pleading with you to regulate Hatcher has been nightmarish for all participants. As said by concerned citizens and proven by Hatcher over and over again, this particular program has not worked, but much rather created and perpetuated harm. Their version of harm reduction kills us all. If $100,000 grant costs millions in public spending, cleanup costs, potential medical liabilities, and the loss in revenues, AKA sales tax, due to businesses leaving, it's an overall bad deal. Nothing and no one has caused as much damage to Eureka as Hatcher has. The library is lost ground. The whole area lives on high alert and in discomfort, dealing with the fallout of Hatcher, and a bad press is bad PR for Eureka's tourism. Hatcher, its highest leadership, has engaged in deceptions, lies, irresponsible behaviors, cover-up, election meddling, witch hunts, slander, and calls for violence against its critics. Brown shirt methods, SA style. And our representatives condone and support that. Countless pictures of seating council members next to and hugging Brandy Wilson speak volumes. Costa Mesa, Chico, and Orange County, and other places in West Virginia and New Jersey shut and will, or will shut down their failing syringe-exchange programs via municipal codes, court hearings, or health code violations. In the midst of the opioid epidemic, it is time to halt and reverse failed social programs that reduce harm for some while creating harm for everyone. Maintaining the status quo is deadly and costly, and is your job to adhere to transparency, accountability, and responsibility, the only tar we need from our officials and service providers alike. When will you hear, see, and act accordingly? If Seattle is dying, Eureka is drowning. All of us here, we the people, we all would be fine with 1-4-1 or none, with CRV on capped needles, with anything that deals with a mess and unsolved environmental catastrophe that those kinetic bioweapons pose. Can those that caused the crisis offer a solution to make Eureka safe again?
Pro Tem, council members, my name's Harry Wilcox, 13-year resident of Eureka. And I'm not here to badger anybody or get in anybody's face. I'm here to discuss what I've been discussing on the internet and with people. And that's, Eureka's number-one problem seems to be, at this point, a lack of mental health care. When they closed all the mental institutions in the United States, they promised us outpatient clinics, outpatient treatment, and outpatient outreach, of which we have zero. The little token stuff that we do have does nothing. I have sat with two of the three of the people here and discussed my ideas, nine of them to be exact, for how we could go on with this. Because people always say to me, oh, you've got all these complaints, but where are the solutions? One of them is more mental health locations, more long-term rehabs. HRC does a wonderful job. They're right next door to me. They're my neighbors. They do a wonderful job. But that's 90 days. What happens after these 90 days, where these people are just getting back on their feet? And they've got no place to go after that. What happens? Well, they go right back out in the street. And let me tell you, someone who used heroin for 40 years, yes, 40, and now have 13 years clean and sober, every time I pick up a needle, it talks to my addict. It makes me have to fight every day. I lived in New York City all my life. Never saw syringes on the street. In fact, in New York, you could get one full year if you were found with one on you as paraphernalia charge. If it was loaded, it was even more. My suggestions, and I'm going to try to do this quick, were a van. We called them the hack van back east, who traveled and picked these people up and brought them to a central location, a sobering-up station, a detox unit. And John Shelter has come before you people plenty of times and suggested a triage center, which would be a fantastic place to take people and get the work evaluated, people evaluated, and move on. But if you're not going to listen to any of this stuff, don't get mad at us when we get mad at you. Because that's what's creating all this negative energy here in Eureka, is people try to make suggestions and are ignored. Well, people are leaving. I can't leave. I'm stuck here. I gotta fight. But people are leaving in droves. And pretty soon, all that's gonna be left are leftists, wackos, drunks, and homeless.
Our next speaker is James Graham, followed by Rick Gustafson.
Good evening, council, members that are here. I miss the mayor. I miss Mrs. Mezner. Anyway, I had a meeting earlier with Councilmember Costellano about needle awareness in schools, like as low as head start, maybe kindergarten. I mean, I know older kids know better than to go near a needle. But I don't think anybody's taught little kids to stay away from it. And from what I've found from Totty Thomas Elementary and my kid's teacher at head start, there's not much that kids are being shown. Maybe a little, like after 5th grade and up they are. But nobody's teaching the little kids anything. And I'm trying to get a program where they can at least just have a picture of a needle. Like, if you see this, tell an adult, do not touch it. Not trying to teach them about any kind of narcotics, just do not touch the needle. And she's agreed to work with me and possibly the mayor, and that's a good thing there. So I met with her at 3:00. On my way from Fortuna, I seen about three people nodded off in various locations. One was right by the Furniture Center, where you go to Myrtle Avenue, where the three utility boxes are. And he had a big trailer and stuff. And I mean, he's got to sleep somewhere, but there's a difference in sleeping than nodding off, you know? You don't sleep like that. Anyway, so then I had to wait till 6:00 to come here. And then I seen like three more people while I was driving around, nodding off in like, you know, storefronts, middle of the day, just nodding off. I mean, you got a big heroin problem here. And you can bet where they're nodding off are, there's needles left behind. Pretty much guarantee that. And I don't really got much to say more than what Cornelius and Harry said. We got a problem with Hatcher. I mean, I'd say that's 90% of Eureka's problem right there. If you could regulate that somehow or get rid of them, make them follow the rules at the very least. I mean, you got drug addicts running the place, catering to other drug addicts. That's not harm reduction. That's unacceptable is what it is. That's about all I got to say. But thank you for your time, and thank you for meeting with me. And no matter what, I'd like to do that for the children, you know? It's the least we could do, very least. Thank you.
The next member was Rick Gustafson?
Gustafson?
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Pro Tem, council people. I'm here to talk about BMBs. I'm wondering if the city has any kind of plan or some sort of, yeah, some kind of plan as to how many of these Airbnb's and how many, now I have a house across the street that's going to be a full event house, or, so they claim not events, but they can have eight people there in the house, and maybe more. So that's going to be maybe four couples. They can have children. But, you know, there's going to be issues with parking. There's going to be issues with coming in late at night, although they're not disturbing the peace. If they're unloading their cars and they're going in at midnight or something because they had a long drive to get here, they're disturbing our community and my neighborhood. And so I'm just here to say, is there a plan? Is there going to be some sort of ratio that says we can only have so many of these things per square blocks or whatever? Or is it just whatever happens? I mean, these are nice homes now that are being bought. And I have a hearing to go do to talk about this on my street, about a nice home that's just being bought. And I'll never really know the people that live there. They're going to be transient people. They're going to come and go. So what happens to our neighborhoods overall if this just keeps blossoming all over the place? We don't have that community connection in the neighborhood anymore. Because we see people, maybe they come twice a year to this, stay at this one facility or whatnot. Otherwise, they're gone, and it's a whole new group of people. We don't know who the people are across the street. Are they, you know, scoping the neighborhood, spending time doing that? What are they doing? I mean, I'm kind of using a devil's advocate of this because we have had serious problems right next door to us. And I mean, even serious enough that the police came and took away some of the occupants in handcuffs on several occasions. So I don't think I'm out of whack here trying to talk about this because we've had some experiences about that. And now we have a unit going in across the street, beautiful home, but it's not going to be on our neighborhood. It's going to be a commercial venture in a neighborhood. So thank you for your time.
We've called all of the cards. Is there anyone else from the audience that would like to come and speak in public comment? Okay, seeing no one. We will go back to the consent calendar. All matters listed under this category are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. Unless a specific request is made by a council member, the consent calendar will not be read. There will be no separate discussion of these items. However, if discussion is required, that item will be removed from the consent calendar and considered separately. Would anyone like to pull an item from the consent calendar? No? Okay. So do we have a motion to approve the balance of the consent calendar?
So moved.
I'll second.
Great. Please vote.
Three yes votes. Councilmember Mezner and Allison absent. Motion carries.
All right. So moving on to ordinances and resolutions, we have, let's see, the updated procurement ordinance, and we have Director Gerving here to speak to this. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem and council members. So as indicated in the staff report, the updated procurement policy was just approved on the consent calendar. And following up on the December 3rd, 2019, adoption of the updated procurement ordinance, in preparing the procurement policy, staff noted that there were a couple of changes that would be wise to make in the municipal code. And I do apologize for how the ordinance presents in the agenda packet, because the underlying strike-through that was there in track changes doesn't show up in the agenda packet. But basically, the changes here have to do with bid opening procedures for informal bids, and also removing the requirement for a bid bond for public works projects of less than $60,000. So those are the two changes. Staff recommends introducing the ordinance tonight, and I can answer any questions if you've got them.
Do we have any questions from council? Okay, seeing none. Is there anyone from the public who came to comment on this item?
Mayor Pro Tem Burgel and council, my name's Richard Marx, and I am a Regional Compliance Manager for the Construction Industry Force Account Council. I was hoping to speak a little bit on the canopy project, kind of leaks into here because of processes of bidding and public contract code and public works jobs. I'm very much in favor of you to accept this ordinance change. And I would encourage the council in maybe the future to become part of the signatory California Uniform Construction Cost Accounting Act. Since you're already going to be abiding by a lot of their language, I would think that it might be a good time for the city of Eureka to make that choice to become part of the act. And I just, I'm supportive of this. I like what's going on with the city of Eureka. I love the construction projects that are exciting with the zoo. And I just want to say thank you. And again, I'm very much in favor of this ordinance change.
Thank you, Richard. Okay, seeing no one, we'll return it to council. Do you have any comments or a motion?
I'll make a motion to waive reading, read by title only, and introduce bill number 977-C-S, an ordinance of the city of Eureka amending Eureka Municipal Code 39.38 pertaining to informal bidding requirements. Second.
Please vote.
Three yes votes. Councilmember Mezner and Allison absent, and motion carries.
Okay, reports and action items. We have a general fund budget forecast. Director Millar.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem and city council.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and city council. Tonight's presentation is on the general fund and the budget forecast for the fiscal years twenty twenty-one to twenty-four, twenty-five. So this slide is from my last presentation, uh, where I presented the mid-year analysis. And the point of that presentation was to look at where we will be at the end of the fiscal year. Tonight is a forecast. Um, it's focused on expenditures. Next time, it'll be focused on revenues. Um, these first three bullet points are really for analysis before we move into, uh, the budget items, which will come after. Um, so I've broken out the general fund expenditures into two types. Um, the first is operational. Uh, these expenses are reoccurring. They're usually predictable and they're the majority of the budget line items. The other category, capital outlay, uh, these expenses are usually a one-time expense. Uh, they are infrequent and they can be large dollar amounts. Uh, because of those characteristics, they are really hard to predict. So for tonight's purpose, um, I will be focusing on, uh, the operational line items. So I've broken, broken out the expense, expenses into categories, starting with personnel and then the fire service, uh, cost allocation, outside services, miscellaneous expenses, material supplies and equipment, and finally, the CalPERS unfunded liability payments. So before we begin, uh, I'd like to put up this pie chart. It gives us an idea about how large those categories are relative to one another. So I will start with personnel, which is on the right and work my way clockwise. Uh, there is one category that it's, that is somewhat unique, and that is the unfunded liability payments. So I'm going to skip over that and then save that for last. So we begin by looking backward. So what I've done in this analysis is I've looked at growth rates. And to calculate growth rates, I've used, uh, what, what is called a compound annual growth rate. Um, what this does, it looks at the year-over-year growth over a specified period of time. The idea being that I'm going to look back five years in order to look into the future for five years. Uh, the first category are personnel costs. Uh, these are mainly salaries, uh, health insurance, the CalPERS normal cost, workers' comp, Medicare and a variety of other expenses. So being the largest expense, uh, we began the fiscal year fifteen sixteen at just over eleven million. Uh, these costs are typically, uh, you see, uh, less volatility in personnel costs. Um, and overall, uh, we've seen a growth rate of roughly two point three percent. Uh, the next category is our fire service, uh, which is operated by the Humboldt Bay Fire JPA. Uh, we're in a partnership with the Humboldt Bay Fire, Humboldt Bay Fire District, and we pay about sixty-five percent of their budget. So since two thousand fifteen sixteen, uh, their budget was just under five point five million. Uh, today, it's just over six point one. And the growth rate is similar to personnel costs at about two point four percent. The next category is the cost allocation. So really what this is are the overhead expenses. So we allocate out the general government and administration costs, including finance and HR and the city manager. It also includes risk management. So this is liability insurance and workers' comp. Uh, it includes IT, uh, equipment operations, facility operations. And unlike the previous two categories, we've seen some volatility around cost allocation. But overall, this has grown at a rate of about two point four percent. Um, if you're noticing that a lot of these rates are similar, it's because, well, a lot of these cost allocation expenses are personnel. Uh, most of the Humboldt Bay Fire's budget is personnel. So they tend to track our biggest costs, which are personnel costs. The next category are outside services. This includes consultants, utilities, travel, training, public noticing. Really, these are services, they are not tangible items. Um, this category has seen very little growth overall. Um, we're close to where we were about, about five years ago. Uh, it's seen less than a one percent growth rate. Uh, the next category is miscellaneous. Um, this includes the marketing service costs, uh, the Eureka Visitor Center, the Eureka Main Street, Film Commission, Clark Museum and a few other entities. We've seen some volatility in these costs, uh, but overall, they've increased at a rate of about three point, three point four percent. The final category, materials, supplies and equipment. Uh, this represents the smallest piece of the pie. This includes consumables, uh, furniture, street materials such as asphalt, uh, animal food for the zoo, uh, uniforms and protective gear and many other items. Um, ironically, this category has seen the greatest amount of growth at a rate of about three point seven five percent. But luckily, it's the smallest piece of the pie, so. Um, for the final category, we're going to talk about the unfunded liability payments. So what the CalPERS unfunded accrued liability, what that represents, um, this is when a pension plan's accrued liability exceeds the value of the plan's asset. And that's what we call an unfunded liability. To simplify things, it's just showing that our pension fund's assets are less than the liabilities. Um, what is the result of an unfunded liability? Well, the plan will have to pay contributions exceeding the normal cost rate. And that normal cost rate is under personnel expenses. These costs aren't determined by the city, they're determined by the state and they provide the schedule. So the difference in this chart is that it's not looking back five years, but looking forward. So you can see, beginning in twenty twenty-one, this cost is about just over two point eight million. And by twenty-four, twenty-five, it actually drops off a bit, uh, for an overall growth rate of about one point four four percent. So at this point, um, I've looked backward and now we're going to look forward to do the projection. So what that entails is I start with fiscal year nineteen twenty. I apply those growth rates. And I do it for five years going forward. So here's the, I mean, it's hard to see, but here are all the expense categories, including the CalPERS unfunded liability payments. And here's the same data represented as a bar chart. And you can see between fiscal year twenty twenty-one and fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, we're going to watch our budget likely grow from about thirty point seven million to over thirty-three point five million. So overall, what this shows is that our future growth rate, including the unfunded liability payments and the rest of the categories, uh, we should expect roughly a one point eight percent growth, uh, in our general fund expenditures. So really, the purpose of this presentation was just to be, you know, simple and to the point. So as we are going into our budget process, um, this is what we should expect in terms of growth among the categories in the general fund. Are there any questions?
Do you have any questions from council? Council member Arroyo?
Um, so, I mean, we've seen some fluctuations in the past, uh, around workers' comp, for example, was something that, um, uh, was a significant fluctuation when we had the, uh, transition to Humboldt Bay Fire. Um, you know, taking on more of, uh, more of the employees. And then we saw, we saw a significant change in our workers' comp rates. And so I'm wondering if there are any, um, any organizational, um, changes that we're considering that, I, I mean, I, I don't know of anything that big that we're thinking about at this point in time. But is there anything, um, that you see that could skew these numbers, um, as far as a, a, you know, a shift in the way that we function? Or anything coming down from the state that might be, uh, that we might have a hint of now?
Uh, not really. Um, so the only, or the state has provided us essentially thirty years of these unfunded liability payments. I mean, that's unfortunate because we have to pay those off across thirty years. But there's a lot of certainty there, so that makes it easy to plan for. Uh, we have seen some volatility in expenses like workers' comp. Um, ironically, today, uh, workers' comp seems to have smoothed out and it's the general liability that it's, that's increasing. Um, so, you know, overall, we're going to see some categories start to act with more volatility. But, um, I think being focused on the big picture, which is all the expenditures, uh, we should expect, you know, relatively slow growth. And I don't see anything that would change that, um, the projection at this point.
Okay, yeah, I just, uh, I'm trying to track sort of some of the expectations from the state, particularly around housing and how we are, um, held responsible for providing, um, shelter, um, as a city and how that, you know, it looks like they'll be looking to transfer that responsibility even more onto cities, um, rather than keeping it at a state or county level. Um, and so I just wondered if, yeah, it's sort of speculative at this point. So I, I realize you can't really answer detailed questions about the governor's ideas.
I think we should pay attention, but to put that in a number form would be somewhat difficult at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions?
Let's see, um, in terms of the unfunded CalPERS liability, um, are you aware of any conversations about restruc- I mean, because I know this is something that has hit many, many cities in California. Um, are there conversations that you're aware of about a restructuring of that? Or, or looking at it on a kind of broader state level?
Um, I think what we're seeing today is what we're likely to continue to see. Um, so, you know, that really came about because of the last recession in two thousand eight. And then what the state did is that they created some new plans for new employees called the PEPRA, um, legislation. So that, that's made a big difference. Um, that has kind of stopped the losses at this point. Um, at, you know, we're seeing more and more of our employees under the PEPRA plan, which is good for us because that plan doesn't have an unfunded liability. Unfortunately, I think, you know, this pension issue is something that is not going to go away anytime soon. And there's very little you can do aside from paying more money to pay down the costs. And there are some, um, benefits by being more aggressive on your payments. Um, it would lead to more sustainability and it would reduce the, essentially the interest costs that we're going to be paying over time.
Um, and then, let's see, um, something that people bring to my attention fairly often, and I'm just aware of in Eureka, I'm sure you are too, is, uh, roads. And so, you know, I mean, there's special projects, which would be within the capital outlay category. But regular maintenance, um, do you foresee, um, growing the potential, you know, like what we have available for improving roads or increasing the available funds?
I think as we move into the, the budget process, we'll, uh, look at that specifically. Um, there are some strategies we can apply to help us find more funding for roads. Uh, currently, uh, we're paying for street maintenance through, um, state funding, whether that's gas tax, um, or we get, uh, a couple hundred thousand dollars a year from HCOG. This, this money is all from the state. Um, that's how we're supporting maintenance today. Um, those revenues should grow slightly, but not significantly. Um, so what we have today is really what we'll see in the future unless we make some changes.
Thank you. And I have one question. When we're talking about the unfunded liability, what is going on with our savings account? Didn't we have a savings account for, um, unfunded liability? We put a hundred thousand in there a couple of years ago, or is that still happening? Are we adding to that or is that just sitting somewhere? Does that sound familiar?
It does sound familiar. Um, really, it's sitting in our fund balance.
Okay. And are we adding to that at any, or is it just kind of?
Uh, since that one, um, resolution, that, that's been the only resolution.
Great, thank you. One more question? Or not one more. Council member Arroyo?
I have to be judicious with my questions. So when we, when we think about issues like, um, this last year with the, the sinkhole, you know, unforeseen, um, major projects that require a significant capital outlay, how do those factor into these projections? Are we just, um, making the assumption that that covers, um, some large projects that are unexpected? And, and how, how do you figure that out?
Um, so for that issue, uh, we might want to look into separating out those capital outlay projects out of the general fund, um, because they don't, you know, they are unpredictable. And, you know, for budgeting for the general fund, it's really hard to, uh, incorporate another half million dollar project uh, to set us up to withstand those unexpected events. You know, the, I think what, uh, the best thing we could do is to establish a fund focused on, you know, whether, uh, all projects or all, all capital projects or maybe just streets and to start to build up a reserve in that fund to help us, um, kind of prepare for those events. Um, I think it, it's just hard to kind of, to manage those types of projects within the general fund. Uh, the general fund really looks at, you know, year to year. Um, I think that what's good about the CIP funds is that they kind of look outwards, um, beyond just an annual budget. So I think the best approach for that is to, uh, set up a new fund and start to, uh, contribute, you know, a small dollar amount at first and let that grow so that we have, you know, um, a rainy day fund to pay for those events.
Okay. Thank you.
Further questions? Okay. Thank you, Director Millar.
Thank you.
Oh, we do need to take public comment. Is there anybody from the public here to speak on this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back. We're just receiving the report, right? Okay.
Oh, go ahead. Another question, sorry. Uh, th- thank you for the report. Um, I just want to state that something I'm interested in is, I think, something similar to the rainy day fund you spoke of. Um, and that's also just planning for the potential for a recession, um, or a decline in available funds so that we're not caught, uh, struggling or unable to meet our service needs for our community. So that's something, you know, I know our budget is pretty narrow and, but I, I would like to start to see some of that planning. Yeah.
Agreed. Thank you. And thank you, Director Millar.
Thank you.
Okay, boy, it's a short night. We're over to city manager reports already.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Burgel. Um, just a few items. Uh, I think it's, uh, pretty well known that our Food for People location had a bit of an issue with sewer backup. And, uh, city staff met with, uh, representatives from that organization and are, uh, looking at relocating temporarily to the old Chamber of Commerce building. And so that does seem to be coming to fruition. Uh, staff is having the furnaces checked out. Uh, Director Gerving informed me it was forty-eight degrees in there today. So we thought they might want a, a touch warmer, uh, than that while they're occupying it. Um, a lease was already sent over for their consideration. It'll have a very nominal amount of, um, rent, just to memorialize the agreement, a dollar, in case you're wondering. It'll have a very nominal amount of rent, just to memorialize the agreement, a dollar, in case you're wondering. And, and so things are moving forward with regards to that and I appreciate Director Groving and Swan Ashberry for, for jumping on that project for us. Bear River, we had a great event, a Flamingo Society event on Saturday at Bear River, kind of announcing the partnership between the City of Eureka and the tribe and it was well attended and quite enjoyable. Wendy and I certainly enjoyed ourselves quite a bit. So the other thing I just want to mention is that during that presentation, there were some kind of question marks with regards to the branding or the naming, if you will, of the Canopy Walk. And so I just want to make it known and clear that Eddie Alexander will be working through different names with an analytical software that allows for search engine optimization when people are actually doing Google searches or any kind of internet searches. We want to make sure that while the name might, might sound good, we want to know that it actually is going to help, you know, people find us. And they, they're well positioned to do that for us. And so I think that there were some folks a little disappointed with that because they really wanted to put their name in and we can always take names and run them in the, through the analytics too. But we look forward to seeing how that results from Eddie Alexander's efforts and that way we'll have a name for it. Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Okay, and we'll start with council reports with Councilmember Costellano.
Okay, let's see, the last couple of weeks. First, I just want to appreciate community services and all the folks involved with Uplift for putting on that great benefit for Eureka's homeless programs. It was really fun and everyone worked many hours putting it together and it was just a huge success. And so thanks also to everyone who came out. I attended the homeless leadership meeting, a presentation at GHD on Opportunity Zones organized by County Economic Development, a zero waste training, our regular boards and commissions. And then up, coming up, there's a few things this Saturday. The City of Eureka is participating in a team of Bull for Kids Sake, so come on out, should be fun. I believe we're the unicorns, I'm sure we'll be, we'll have entertaining costumes on. On March nineteenth, from six to eight PM, I am hosting a town hall at Jefferson Community Center. And on March twenty-fifth, at six PM, I am co-hosting a Wabash Neighborhood Business, we don't have a real name yet, but a neighborhood and business association meeting at Our Town Church, which is at the corner of Wabash and Union. That's March twenty-fifth for businesses and people who live on Wabash.
I just have a couple of things. I attended the Community Emergency Response Teams training. I went to one in Bridgeville, but I look forward to connecting with the CERT team in Eureka, which is much larger. But that was the, the most recent training that was held and it was three subsequent days, which usually the training is over a multi-week period, so it was nice to get it done. And those, the CERT teams really focus on preparedness for disasters and being the sort of initial response, the neighbors helping neighbors level of response for significant disasters and being able to help with basically Good Samaritan level first aid and triage in case of, you know, worst-case scenario type disaster in the community until additional help can arrive. So it's really helpful to, to get that information and think about, you know, how folks need to be prepared and, you know, to some degree able to withstand, you know, a couple of days of, of something bad happening, especially in our community where we're a little more isolated. You know, obviously, we live in the most urban part of Humboldt County, but nonetheless, I think, you know, there's a lot to be learned there about preparedness. So I encourage everyone to consider that training and look into the CERT program. I went to the Sip and Spell fundraiser for the Eureka Women's Club. They're looking to paint their building and I participated in their adult spelling bee and I got second place in many rounds of spelling. There were some very challenging words and I will say I got some really tough words. So I think I, I got the short end of the stick actually as far as the, the way the random words happened. Maybe it was not random, but anyway, I, I did well, but I was happy to cede the win to the winning speller. And I look forward to participating next year, so if folks hear about it next year, it's very fun. And please support the Eureka Women's Club in their efforts to restore and upgrade their building. And I think that's all that I have really. There's lots and lots of meetings with the committees that we serve on. The Humboldt Transit Authority is meeting tomorrow at ten AM. Those meetings have been moved from nine to ten AM on, on Wednesdays. The, the schedule is a little bit in flux given the board members' different, differing schedules. So we're trying, trying the ten AM time instead. But I encourage folks who are interested in talking about transit to reach out with, reach out to me. And there will be some additional analysis of the Eureka Transit System in the near future. So, you know, I know that folks continue to reach out and say, hey, the system's not quite working for me and here's what I'd like to see. And so just know that that is still ongoing. And, oh, a great meeting with the Harbor District. We have a two-by-two committee, two council members and two Harbor District Commissioners. And so that was really productive and lots of good talk about dredging and harbor maintenance and harbor economic development opportunities. So that's all I've got.
And I just have a couple of things. I got to attend the badge pinning for, or not the badge pinning, but the pinning for the Humboldt Bay Fire. There were a lot of people getting pinned and there were promotions. And it was just, it's always such a great opportunity to appreciate and be there and just honor the people that have worked so hard to serve our city and they do such a fabulous job. And then secondly, I was also at the Flamingo Society reception, if you will. And I just wanted to mention, one thing that came up and that has been coming up, and I just want to clarify this, I'm on the zoo, I'm the zoo liaison, is that animals that come to the zoo are not animals that, you know, they go out and, you know, catch or do anything like that. The animals at the zoo that they get there are animals that have been injured, animals that can't live on their own anymore, animals that have been, they're nuisance animals that would have been put down if they hadn't found a place to live. So I think that's really important to understand is that we're not just going and trapping animals to put in the zoo or capturing them. These animals really couldn't survive in the wild without, well, they can't survive without support. And so I really appreciate how our zoo is working consistently on conservation and looking at how we can, you know, teach people about the animals of our region in a way that is, you know, that is interactive in a lot of ways. So it's really exciting, the, whatever it's going to be called and the bear, the bear and coyote exhibit. Our zoo is changing in so many awesome ways. It's just a really, it's really going to be a gift. And just, I think we've mentioned this before, but the highest part of the Canopy Walk is a hundred feet now. So it should be an exciting time for those of you who are interested in that type of thing. I'm not sure if I'm interested in that type of thing yet. And then Bull for Kids Sake, we're going to be down at the Bowling Alley Saturday, five forty-five. Just so you know, if you want to come see some wacky looking people. And then the last thing I have is the Perilous Plunge is March twenty-first and I am about four hundred dollars from my goal. So if you would like to donate, this is my tenth year, you can go online for the Discovery Museum. I currently don't have a Facebook page, but that will be remedied in the future. So you'd have to go online or send a check, either way, or go to the office. But it's a great event, it's really fun, it's insane, and it benefits a lot of our youth, which is super important. Just like Bulls for Kids Sake, that's where we start out. We start with our youth and that's how we improve our community, so thank you. And with that, Councilmember Arroyo has one more thing.
Actually, two more things, they're so fast. I just want to give a huge shout out to our staff who were successful in getting a grant for Twenty Thirty Park, over six million dollars of funding to radically transform that park. So exciting and it was, I believe, the only site in Humboldt County that got funded in this round of Prop sixty-eight. So just really, really exciting and great work and look forward to seeing the changes there. And then please mark your calendars for May fifteenth. You don't even have to know what it is yet because you know it's going to be awesome. I'll tell you what it is. We're having a Henderson Center, like a sip and stroll and arts event where it will be a tasting night, comparable but a little different to Taste of Main Street, you know, meets arts alive. And Henderson Center really trying to work with the Henderson Center Merchants Association to have some fun evening events there, hoping to close off the street and, and do a pop-up park on, where they have the farmer's market on F Street, but staff don't know that yet, so surprise. And the date was just finalized and we're moving forward quickly with this as a, as a fundraiser actually for the Eureka Street Art Festival, which will be in Henderson Center this year. So I'm really excited it's going to be in my ward and going to bat with helping on this event. And I'm working closely with the Street Art Festival organizers to make it a really fun event where folks walk around Henderson Center and get to know some new businesses and hang out with their neighbors. So look for more details soon, but that'll be, definitely be on May fifteenth. It's a Friday and it's before the Friday night market starts, avoiding all conflicts. So if there's a new conflict, it emerged after this because we have secured that date, so stay tuned.
Okay, does anyone have anything else? With that, thank you all for coming, this meeting's adjourned.